December meeting for the City of Franklin Planning Commission meeting. I'm gonna be your host tonight. Who also called the chairman, or chair, I guess I should say, I'm a piece of furniture. But I will say, does anybody remember The Little Rascals? I'm gonna be froggy tonight as well, so if you've never seen me before, my voice is not usually this crackly, but it is tonight. So, we will start with the minutes from our October meeting, if I can get a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Alright ladies and gentlemen, if there's items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to have comments to the commission about, please come forward. Again, items that are not on the agenda if you want to speak to the commission about. Alright, I see none, we'll move on to announcements, staff.
Good evening, everyone. That sounds well. I just want to announce that the zoning ordinance passed on third reading on Tuesday night. We're very excited to get started with it. The effective date's gonna be December 30th, which lines up with the first submittal for the February Planning Commission items. So, the February Planning Commission will really be the first time you're seeing any items under that ordinance. So, really excited about that. There were some amendments, I just wanted to let you all know at the board level, specifically relating to the short-term vacation rentals, there were several amendments related to that. Some, a couple addressing specific properties in the scenic corridor overlay, which I think most of you would be familiar with. Some regarding tree canopy and setbacks in the planned district. And then, a minor tweak to a requirement for side porches on corner lots. But everything else, I mean, the majority of the ordinance stayed intact. We will be, during this first year of implementation, really studying how the standards are working. We'll be evaluating, and we'll come back to you in a year with any necessary amendments, kind of based on that evaluation timeframe. There's also gonna be some studies delved into next year regarding the floodplain standards, and I think there's gonna be a task force, kinda committee-type approach to looking at how we address maybe some of the citizen comments related to that, while also still maintaining the integrity of our floodplain protection standards. So, I just wanted to give you a little update on that. If you have any specific questions, feel free to follow up with me after the meeting, or later next week, or after the holidays, and I can give you more detail. But we're really excited. We did, just so everybody knows, we did the majority of the zoning ordinance in-house, saving quite a bit of money for the city. We were three and a half months ahead of our anticipated schedule for the adoption date, and we've had several applicants actually request to come in under the new ordinance in advance of the adoption, which we took as a great sign, and we've heard great comments about the usability of it. So, we do think that's a good way to get started.
Good.
And then, just one last announcement, regards to the local development drive-around tour that we're gonna be doing, I sent out an email three or four weeks ago, just wanna make sure you have it on your calendar for February 3rd. It will, we will be departing City Hall at 9:00 a.m., and the tour will go through noon. We'll be looking specifically at residential and multifamily development, really also discussing the lot sizes, lot widths, that are in envisioned Franklin, for an upcoming study of those policies. And then, from noon to 1:00, we will provide lunch here at City Hall and have a discussion. This is a joint Planning Commission and Board of Mayor and Aldermentor.
Okay.
We'd love for you all to be there.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, if there's anybody that would like to place an agenda, an item on the agenda that's not on tonight's agenda, if you'll come forward. Alright, then we will move to our consent agenda. These are items that are considered non-controversial, that we'll vote on at one time tonight. Those items that are on the consent, as requested, is items 2 through 9, and item number 11. So, if there's anybody in the audience, staff, or commission that wants to pull an item off that consent agenda item, consent agenda, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Alright, that means we'll move on to item number 10, which is consideration of resolution 2019-116, a resolution to adopt an envisioned Franklin plan amendment for the properties located at, on Old Oak Meadow Drive east of South Royal Oaks. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal is to amend the envisioned Franklin design concepts map for two parcels located on the south side of Oak Meadow Drive, east of South Royal Oaks Boulevard. The western parcel's currently designated as neighborhood commercial, and the eastern parcel is regional commerce. The applicant is requesting that both parcels receive the design concept of neighborhood mixed use. The applicant intends to develop the site with a master plan project consisting mostly of multifamily residential, but it would also include office and commercial uses. There are three project considerations stated in the staff report, I'd like to highlight the third one, which is the envisioned Franklin recommendation, as it's currently stated in the plan, as neighborhood commercial. And it stems partially from the Epic Development PUD proposal that failed in 2016. Tonight's amendment request differs from the Epic Development PUD because it does not propose multifamily uses for the parcel located behind Home Depot. It also contains fewer residential units, and it integrates commercial uses. The completion of Summerby in 2017 has also altered the character of this corridor. The massing scale and nature of this facility is a significant change. The addition of multifamily residential uses on the south side of Oak Meadow Drive could be a complementary transitional use between the higher-intensity assisted living and the lower-intensity single-family uses found in Creekstone. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of resolution 2019-116.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna set a few ground rules, so we're all on the same page. If you'll come forward and stand in line behind the podium, if you want to speak about this project, also, if you'll keep your comments to two minutes or less, we'd appreciate it. There's a big light over here that indicates where you stand relative to that two minutes. And as you begin, if you'll tell us your name and where you live, that'll help us for the minutes of the meeting. So, anybody who wants to come forward and start, give us comments on this envisioned Franklin plan amendment, please do. We'll listen to you however you get here.
Good evening, my name is Richard Byrd, and I've been a resident of Franklin for 33 years. I'm a representative of two constituencies. First, I am president of the Hunter's Chase Neighborhood Association. We are a neighborhood at the corner of Mack Hatcher and Lewisburg Pike. As such, Royal Oaks is one of the major roads utilized by our neighbors and residents. Additionally, I'm a member of the Elks Lodge that abuts and overlooks the property in question. We stand firmly against any rezoning that would permit 235 apartments. While the developer is saying the project will result in a mixed-use development with retail, restaurant, and residential units, less than 10% of the square foot each proposed is something other than apartments. This is an apartment complex with a shop or two. Three major issues exist. Density. In June 2016, a request for 98 apartments on this parcel was denied. Now, a request for 235, two and a half times greater density than before. Traffic. An increase of 500 to 1,000 more car trips per day will be seen in this intersection. Traffic congestion seems destined to be a serious issue, and this does not take into account the development behind Home Depot. Finally, home values. Adding an apartment complex adjacent to single-family neighborhoods is troublesome. So, I ask, what has changed to address these issues since the denial of 2016? Nothing. In fact, local traffic and density has increased. And what is the positive takeaway if rezoning is approved? Strictly profit for the developer. I implore the Planning Commission and Lee Alderman to be wise, and repeat their understanding of these issues, as they did in 2016, and deny this zoning request.
Good evening, my name's Lee Anderson, and I live at, on Chatsworth Court in the Preserve at Forest Crossing. And I'm the current president of the Preserve at Forest Crossing HOA. And I'm also a member of the Franklin Alliance of Homeowners Association, which represents 13 HOAs, including Forest Crossing, Sullivan Farms, Ladd Park. And we represent several thousand residents in Ward 3. And just to let you know, we are not in favor of this rezoning change. First of all, we believe that the city planners and the city have spent a lot of money on the Connect Franklin Plan, and it was done with professionals. And so, we believe that those plans should remain in place. Richard talked a little bit about traffic concerns, and we understand that there are impact fees, but there's no guarantee that those impact fees will actually go to the improvements that are necessary in those roads. Royal Oaks, and especially Mack Hatcher, where Mack Hatcher gets narrow up there by the YMCA. So, in closing, thank you for your time, and please deny this change in, from commercial and regional commerce to neighborhood mixed use. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Cummings Johnson. I'm known as Cummings Johnson, and I don't have much more to say than what Richard Byrd said. But I do live in Forest Crossing. And the statement was made complimentary to who? Well, not to the neighbors there. My wife almost gets hit a few times coming out of Forest Crossing. It's backed up, and we've got some wild enough drivers in this town that don't watch where they're going. We sure don't need any more on this, on the side of Oak Meadow. And I'm a fellow Elks member of the Nashville Franklin Elks Lodge 72, up on top of the hill. And businesses, yes, but changing it to some type of apartments, we do not need any more traffic in that area. It's backed up way past the red light, turning into Forest Crossing now. And I can imagine what it's gonna be like later on. And I'm just wondering, who would be held responsible for all this traffic, and somebody getting hit there? I think maybe you guys ought to be held accountable if, if something's not, we don't need to warn traffic, I mentioned that enough. So, I just appreciate your time, and, and that's it. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Barry Cullen, and I'm a resident of Creekstone at 425 Belleview Drive. This is a rather simple decision from my point of view. Four, three years ago, we, this deal was presented with a 98-unit occupancy on the 17 acres, and now it's being presented for 245 units on the same 17 acres. Obviously, for parking, this is at 2 to 1, we're gonna have over 500 new cars coming on, on that 17 acres, not including with the, I think it's, there's another 10 or 12, 13 acres behind Home Depot, which is gonna be rezoned to office and retail, or commercial for a hotel. Theoretically, that could provide another 400 or 500 cars, we're talking about nearly 1,000 cars a day, to be affecting on Oak Meadows Ryan. Part of the new development includes 4,500 square feet of retail space for the underneath, on the great level of the apartment complex, the 245-unit apartment complex. In conversations with the developer, they admitted that the parking for that was a problem, but it was gonna resolve by parking it on Oak Meadow. That's ridiculous. You know, it seems like if, if the council voted against this three years ago, and it's a worse concept today, your decision is very easy. Thank you for your time.
Hey, everyone, my name is Soham, and I live in Creekstone Community, which is between the 96th and Mack Hatcher. I commute to Nashville downtown every day, and my son goes to the Moore Elementary, which is on Mack Hatcher. I know dropping my son in the school every day morning is, a lot of time is taken out because there is so much traffic at the Mack Hatcher. Coming back in the evening, there is a lot of traffic at YMCA. When we had this meeting, when we had this public hearing last time in 2016, the gentleman, gentleman who was the property, mentioned that Royal Oaks is one of the lifeline to a lot of communities on the Mack Hatcher, and it's one of the road that is mostly used by many people. And putting more apartment complex there, creating 256 more additional homes, is gonna increase that traffic, is gonna choke that lifeline for many communities, is gonna increase the traffic, and is gonna make the situation more horrible than what it is today. So, my request to the committee is to deny this, and maybe ask developer to find out something that will work for everyone. Thanks.
Alright, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Brad Williams, and I'm also a resident of the Creekstone neighborhood. And I'll be very brief, I know we're talking a lot about traffic today, I only want to add that we are already looking at ongoing construction happening on South Royal Oaks, across from the Forest Crossing neighborhood, which is happening now. We're already anticipating increased traffic congestion in that area, which is already really badly congested, just from that construction that's already happening now on an unrelated project. I don't know the details of it, to be honest, but I wanted to just add that, it hadn't been mentioned yet, that one of the, one of the narratives that I'm seeing here, one of the patterns here I'm seeing is traffic, 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 traffic. As a resident of Creekstone for the last four or five years, I can say that just in that period of time, I believe I've seen an increase in the traffic difficulty, in, around peak times, moving from where I live in the Creekstone area down to Mack Hatcher can take 15, 20 minutes. I know that happened today, actually, I spoke with my wife, who left earlier to go to Lewisburg Pike, and on the phone, it took her about 20 minutes to go, you know, a mile. This is something that's pretty common, it's an everyday occurrence in that area, like I said, at peak times. That's not counting the construction already ongoing now, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, seeing, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll open the podium for the owner or applicant.
Hello, thank you, my name is Greg Gamble, and I'm the land planner, working with TDK, who's a developer, for Bob Goodall and Warner Bass, who are joint venture owners of this property. Watson's Glen subdivision started development just at the end of 1990s, right toward the end there, and Royal Oaks was one of the very first portions that was constructed with Watson's Glen subdivision. It was always planned to be entirely commercial, but something changed recently. 2017, Summerby was approved. It is an assisted living facility, and an age-restricted independent living facility with apartments designed for, for seniors of a certain age and older. That changed the character of Oak Meadow. It transformed it from potentially having viable retail, commercial, to really more of a residential road. We're, we're looking at that today as really the impetus of this request, because it has been diminished in the type of use that could go there, the viability of those uses. Now, at the corner of Royal Oaks and Oak Meadow, we believe that's an excellent corner for, for restaurants, and could, and restaurants could be supported there. The policy for neighborhood commercial says residential can be on the floors above commercial, so it doesn't restrict or limit multifamily, it just says it has to be upstairs. It says live-work has to be on the floors above commercial. What we're asking for is for the neighborhood mixed-use policy to allow some opportunities for the residential and live-work to be on the ground floor, at the sidewalk level. This site drops off about 11 to 12 feet from Oak Meadow, down, as it, as it transitions down to the creek below. Our buildings facing Oak Meadow will be three stories in the front, four stories in the back, meaning the parking would be down about 11 or 12 feet below. That works for office, it works for residential, it doesn't work very well for retail. So, we're asking for your consideration tonight, to look at this in its unique situation, topographic, as well as the, the changes that have incurred in this area that would justify changing from neighborhood commercial policy to a neighborhood mixed-use policy. We understand our neighbors' concerns that they brought to you tonight regarding traffic. We've had five neighborhood meetings, that was the number-one issue that was expressed at those meetings. We have invited, in those neighborhood meetings, all of the residents from Creekstone, all the residents from Forest Crossing, all the residents from Riverside, because we wanted their input. We showed the master plan that we have, we haven't submitted that master plan, we'd like to. That's going to go through another round of discussion. We're currently studying the market, how much office can we get, how much live-work can we get? All of that is, is still in the works. But one of the things that we do know is that we want that opportunity to have the live-work on the sidewalk level, to have some apartments at the ground-floor level. We hired a traffic engineer who did a full analysis of Oak Meadow and Royal Oaks to determine what improvements could be made. We know that there are issues. There has not been reinvestment in Royal Oaks in over 20 years. There are several buildings that are now vacant on Royal Oaks, not saying that it's the traffic issue, it's just that there needs to be new investment in this corridor, there needs to be new investment in improvements to Royal Oaks, to 96, to Mack Hatcher. So, we're working with not only the City of Franklin Engineering Department, but the third-party traffic reviewer already, so we can start to understand what improvements need to be made. Yes, there will be a time in which the construction activity does cause some conflicts, it does happen as these improvements are coming, but Rachel Springs has not made improvements to capacity of Royal Oaks. The commercial parcels, Home Depot, the gas, you know, everything that's happened up and down Royal Oaks, they haven't contributed to anything that adds additional capacity, so now's the time. When Epic was proposed, the previous development that was turned down, they did not propose traffic improvements. That is key to the success, no matter whether we develop this as residential or commercial. I look forward to answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. The previous use, or the current use here is neighborhood commercial, and that says that there's no residential units on the ground floor. Can you give a approximation about how many units you're looking at, a range that will be on the ground floor?
We have five buildings that are in our concept plan. Two of those buildings that are closest to I-65 would have all residential uses. I don't have the number off the top of my head, or a percentage, but it gives you some idea of what we're looking at. The other buildings would be mixed-use buildings. And that's still up for discussion as well, I mean, if, as we take a development plan forward, we can have that discussion.
Any other questions?
Well, I do understand their concerns about the traffic. I mean, what possible solutions do you have at this time, with these 245 units?
Sure. A lot of the turn lanes on Royal Oaks are, are not long enough to get people out of the through lane. Another solution that we're bringing to the table is to have two left-bound, left-turn lanes from Royal Oaks onto Mack Hatcher, and sufficient distance on Mack Hatcher that would provide two lanes, and then taper down to one lane. We're also looking at some safety considerations on Highway 96, that's gonna take a little bit more, a little bit more discussion.
Alright, any other comments before we vote?
Just to follow up.
Go ahead.
Follow up on, on traffic. I mean, because we always, when we look at the impact of a development like this on the roadway infrastructure, we often look at turn lanes, and how many turn lanes, and how long are the turn lanes? But we've been, we've been hearing for the last several years about concerns with the overall traffic flow through Royal Oaks from 96 all the way to Mack Hatcher, and from, from the perspective, it's probably not your responsibility as, as a representative, the developer of a specific site, but from the city's perspective, is there a plan, longer term, to add lanes from 96 all the way to Mack Hatcher, to, to try to, to address some of the significant pressure on that road?
One of the things, and Greg mentioned, extending some stories and some turn lanes does provide a benefit. One thing that we could potentially look at is some access management. When you reduce the amount of left-turn lanes on and off of a corridor such as this, you also reduce some of the delay. There's no plan at this time to add any additional lanes through this corridor, but it's certainly something we are aware of, and, you know, projects like this help us plan for where we can make those improvements, when we see these studies come in. So, there's a lot that could be on the table, it's more of a corridor study, which is what we're, we would be requiring of this development to do, and that would, that would provide us a lot of good information. We're, we're a long way off with, with the developer at this stage, but we've, we've certainly started looking at that.
Marcia, go ahead.
So, my question is, I apologize for my voice, because it's getting a little bad, is what, what, what are we at now? C, D, F, on the traffic on this road now? What do we?
It depends on the intersection, and some of the legs are operating at a failed level of service today.
Intersection of South Royal Oaks and, oh, let me get the [inaudible].
96.
Yeah, 96, what are we at?
It's an E.
It's at an E today, which is below what our requirements are.
So, my question would be, would then be, this gets, this still gets a thumbs up? This still gets an approval? We would still then give this a thumbs up?
Well, at this stage, we have not fully vetted a traffic study, which would potentially provide us with improvements. At that time, if we're still at a lower level of service, we would have that discussion. At this point, we don't have the data in front of us, this is just a plan amendment. The, the actual development plan would provide us the traffic study, fully vetted, where we could provide some recommendations to bring that level of service up.
And the reason, and the reason I ask that is because you're sitting here using my sense of, my level of common sense, where I think, and maybe I think higher myself than other people do, but I was thinking E, F, G, something like that, which would cause me to think that I would, you know, probably have to vote no on something like this, because it's atrocious. Okay?
We are planning on moving forward in the very near future with office development proposals along I-65, behind Home Depot, for two- and three-story office buildings. This is an issue, regardless of whether we're proposing multifamily, or proposing office or a hotel. We've got to address this. What we want to do is look at all of this holistically, and have a planned, managed approach to working with engineering and traffic.
Which, Mr. Gamble, that's why I didn't ask that question of you, this is on the city, that's why I asked staff, nothing at all, no, this is, I'm talking about us. city, that's why I asked staff, nothing at all, no, this is, I'm talking about us, that's nothing to do with you or your plan.
All right, any other comments?
There, there is other access to the office complex down 65, is there access that comes in from the north on those?
Yes, Riverside Drive was previously abandoned, road net, road network connecting Oak Meadow up behind Starbucks.
Okay.
The state of Tennessee, TDOT, determined that to be excess property and offered it to the adjacent landowner, or the closest landowner, which happened to be Bob Goodall and Warner Bass, and they purchased that and plan on reconstructing it to public road standards and dedicating it as a public street.
Riverside Drive is a private, wow.
All right, any other?
But access all, from that entire series of office buildings would rely on, on traffic, on access through up out of Drive, right?
No, you can also get to it from behind Publix. It would be fully connected.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So two noes, did you get that? Roger and Marcia, motion for passes?
And this is just the plan amendment.
That's correct. All right, item number 12, consideration of ordinance 2019-43, an ordinance to rezone 7.0 acres from general office to general commercial for the property located at north, located north of Goose Creek Bypass and west of Interstate 65. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because zoning ordinance and the zoning map have been approved with the Boardman Alderman, the, the new zoning based zoning districts, you, the uses in that based zoning districts conform with what the applicant would like to use for that property, so the applicant has requested to withdraw the item.
Okay. All right, do we need to, we don't need to have the public discuss this at this point, I would assume?
If you could just, since they did send out notification, if you could just make sure that there is no one here from the public that wishes to speak, even though they have looked on.
Okay, was there anybody here that wanted to speak to this? Okay, it looks like the notice went, went out and got the right people.
And then if there could actually be a motion to withdraw the item from the planning, by the Planning Commission and a vote, that'd be?
We'll do that.
Move to withdraw?
Second.
Okay, we got a dual second, Elaine, why don't we give Alma that one? Okay, moved and seconded to withdraw from the, totally withdrawal, I would assume. All in favor of that, or any discussion on that motion before we go forward? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 13, resolution 2019-111, resolution approving a development plan for Downs Boulevard properties, PUD subdivisions, with two modifications of development standards for the property located north of Downs Boulevard and west of Columbia Avenue. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to ongoing discussions with staff on some of the conditions of approval, this applicant has requested to defer to the January meeting.
All right, I'll ask the same question, anybody here that wanted to speak to this item? Okay, then, do I have a motion for defer?
Move to defer to the January 2020.
Second.
2020?
Wow.
It's a whole year away. Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, I'm going to pass the baton over to Roger for 14 and 15, I've got to excuse myself on those, so Roger, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Item 14 is consideration of ordinance 2019-45, an ordinance to rezone 1.95 acres from detached residential R2 district to specific development residential SDR 3.59 district for the property located west of Carruthers Parkway and south of Dandridge Drive at 3513 Carruthers Parkway. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting rezoning from detached residential to specific development residential 3.5.
Whoops, 3.59. The zoning change is appropriate based on envisioned Franklin design concept for this property. The development is within the mixed residential design concept, and the zoning change requested is attached, is an attached residential use.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? If so, come to the lectern. Seeing no one, is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble, representing the landowner. This property plan, development plan is being proposed for really two big houses, but one of the big houses is an existing duplex, and we're going to be adding a third apartment to, in, within the existing garage that's, that's in the, in the back. The second building is a new big house, two store, two units on top, two units on the bottom. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion on this item?
Second.
You have a motion by Alma, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 15, the consideration of resolution 2019-114, a resolution approving a development plan for Carruthers Stacked Flats PUD subdivision for the property located west of Carruthers Parkway and south of Dandridge Drive at 13, 3513 and 3515 Carruthers Parkway. Staff?
All right, the applicant again is seeking approval of a development plan for Carruthers Stacked Flats PUD. The proposed subdivision is 2.96 acres, they are proposing seven dw, seven dwelling units between two structures. As Mr. Gamble just stated, those would both be in a big house design. Both structures have the appearance of single family from the exterior. The requested density is 3.59 dwelling units per acre, which is appropriate based on envisioned Franklin. Again, envisioned Franklin places this property in the mixed residential concept. And just one consideration here, while elevations aren't something we approve at the development plan stage, a lot of consideration was given here into the transitioning from the single level into the two-story design concept, so that it transitions appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Greg, the applicant.
Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Move for approval with staff conditions.
You have a motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Marcia?
And this and the last one was really to recommend approval.
Recommend approval, Boardman Alderman.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we'll move on to item number 16, consideration of ordinance 2019-46, an ordinance to rezone 17.53 acres from SDX 3.39 to SDX 2.74. Staff?
The applicant is requesting this zoning change based on a reduction in the number of units that they're going to have, and it's just essentially a cleanup to make sure it reflects appropriately what will be developed there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience who want to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
They put mine back to back. Greg Gamble, representing the applicant, happy to answer any questions that you may have, as we're just cleaning it.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
A second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 17, resolution 2019-115, resolution approving a revised development plan for township PUD subdivision for property located south of Churchill Place and north of McEwen Road. Staff?
All right, the applicant is requesting approval of a revised development plan for the township PUD subdivision. The proposed subdivision is 17.53 acres. They are seeking approval of an additional 34 assisted living units and 43 three-bedroom townhomes. The new development is eliminating eight townhomes that were previously approved on the west side of this property.
Is there anyone representing the applicant? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item first? Okay, is there, will someone represent the applicant?
Greg Gamble, happy to answer any questions that you may have. The eight townhomes are being removed really to make sure that we can address stormwater concerns behind it.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval with staff conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
I think you might have said McEwen.
Did I?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of looking.
Sorry about that, Murph Row.
Yeah, Murph Row.
Too many M's in this city.
Exactly. And this is at the back of Williamson Square.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
The old theater a long time ago.
Yes, yes, exactly.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number 18, resolution 2019-117, resolution adopting a plan of services for the annexation of two properties located east of Lewisburg Pike and north and south of the intersection at Stream Valley Boulevard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Water is located with the, with the, within the Hillsborough, Burrwood, and Thompson Station utility districts, and will be required to have availability approved prior to development. Reclaimed water will not be required to be extended to serve the properties. The property is within the Goose Creek Sewer Basin and an unnamed sewer basin. Development will be required to extend sewer mains approximately 14,500 feet. Additional traffic control devices will be installed in the future as needs are established with the traffic study corresponding to development. No additional manpower or equipment will be necessary for either fire or police protection. Development will need to comply with the single-family and conservation subdivision design concept as outlined in envisioned Franklin. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone in the audience who want to speak to this item, if you will come forward? All right, I see, you want to come forward? Okay.
Would you speak only one at a time, or?
Yeah, we'll do it one at a time, yes, sir. This is a plan of service.
All right, mine is related more to specifics.
Okay, well, you're welcome to wait till, till the next one if you'd like.
All right.
It's up, up to you. Okay, then, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hi, Greg Gamble, and happy to answer any questions you may have on the plan of services.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, item 19, this is same project, a resolution to annex two acres at or near 11445 Lewisburg Pike, consisting of 74.95 acres, property located east of Lewisburg Pike and north and south of Stream Valley Boulevard, resolution 2019-121. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary and designated in envisioned Franklin as appropriate for conservation subdivision and single-family residential uses. A separate zoning request, development plan, and plan of services accompany this annexation request. The associated development proposed in, in this location is the Meadows and Villages at Southbrook PUD subdivision. As a project consideration, a development plan and associated zoning accompany this annexation requests per the zoning ordinance. Should the development and zoning not be approved as requested, an appropriate zoning district should be applied to its properties. Agricultural or estate residential would be appropriate districts in the event that the development plan is not approved. Staff recommends approval.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, on this one, just a reminder, this is annexation discussion on this item. So anybody that would like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Hello, appreciate your time. My name is Brian Davis, I live at 115 Gosling Drive, Franklin, Tennessee, inside Goose Creek Estates. The Southbrook property, one portion of it, is adjacent to Goose Creek Estates. I'd just like to register our opposition to the annexation due to the traffic concerns up and down Lewisburg Pike, as well as the situation with schools in the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, hi, Greg Gamble, and you may notice that these two properties are a portion of the land previously brought to you before as Southbrook. Previously, the plan included over 325 acres on both sides of Lewisburg Pike. Following the, the Planning Commission meeting where Southbrook was discussed, it was discussed at the Board and Mayor and Alderman that there was some concern about bringing forward all of Southbrook at one time. We are intentionally phasing this proposal and incrementally submitting this development plan. So you're seeing the first part, we do have intentions on looking at the other side of Lewisburg Pike. So there were certain milestones that were discussed, number one, that the new elementary school on Goosey Hill Drive open, and it should be open this month, that the new middle school on, um, um...
On Henpeck.
Henpeck Road, and that it needs to be planned and, and up and, and running. So that really does address a, a lot of the school issue in this corridor. The third one was the fire station next to, on Goose Creek Bypass, that we need to be a little bit further down the road on that. And then, fourth, the new interchange at Buckner, that would relieve a lot of the traffic off of Lewisburg Pike for those who are trying to get to the north side of Spring Hill. We get it, we understand that. So that's why we are submitting this in more of an intentional incremental phased approach. Happy to answer any of your questions on annexation. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? This is annexation, unannexation?
I have a question.
This is annexation, excuse me.
On the annexation, it has to be required by the homeowner, right? By the landowner to be annexed, and we can deny that if they ask, if they're asking to be annexed into the city. It's our position, we can, okay, thank you.
Correct. All right, any other questions? Comments?
This is only, this is only a recommendation. Right, recommendation.
That's right. All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number 20, ordinance 2019-48, an ordinance to zone 74.95 acres from, to SDR 2.74, Goose Creek character area overlay special area five, either, either development standards for the property located east of Lewisburg Pike and north and south of Stream Valley Boulevard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The requested zoning for the parcels is SDR 2.74, envisioned Franklin places area A in the single-family design concept, and area B in the conservation subdivision design concept. As part of the conservation subdivision design concept, envisioned Franklin states that new development should, should preserve a minimum of 50% open space strategically targeted toward scenic vistas, greenways, pastures, trails, woodlands, or other uses that maintain scenic character, protect habitat value, and contribute to the quality of life for residents. The request for SDR zoning is appropriate based on the envisioned Franklin concepts described. The density request for 2.74 supports clustering the lots and creating a diversity in dwellings and lot sizes. As a project consideration, the associated development plan does include lots that are smaller than what could be supported with envisioned Franklin, which ultimately increases the density of the project. However, the intent of the density request is to be a maximum for development. It should be understood that plans are further refined in the site plan stage, overall density may be reduced in order for the plan to meet all city ordinances and standards. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to the zoning of this property, if you'll come forward? If you'll come forward.
My name is Steve Ritchie. I live in Stream Valley. My property backs up to the south part of the development. And I couldn't hear everything that he said, but apparently you're changing the zoning from a conservation subdivision to something with more density? Is that what the proposal is?
The proposal is to rezone, or to zone the property because it's not part of the city, has to be zoned to city-based district. The conservation subdivision is part of the, is a design concept in the land use plan.
So are we adhering to the Envision Franklin designation that this is a conservation subdivision? Is that what the staff is proposing?
Sir, if you'll address your questions to the chair, please.
Sure.
And then we'll.
Is that what we're doing?
We're not going to have a conversation. If you'll just let me know your questions and we'll try to answer those.
Right. So, want me to repeat that?
Please do, yeah.
Okay. Are we talking about changing the zoning from a conservation subdivision to something that's going to be more dense with more roofs, smaller homes? Because a conservation subdivision, per Envision Franklin from three years ago, that this was designated, is supposed to have forty-five-foot minimum lot sizes, frontage. And that's not what I received in the mail from Mr. Gamble. There are a lot of lots smaller than that. So is that what you, the commissioner, are talking about doing is narrowing the lot sizes?
Thank you for that question, sir. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. And I'll be back to talk about twenty-one in a minute.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Rainey. I have been a resident of Franklin for twenty years, and I live at six-eleven Cattail Lane, and I am in the wonderful subdivision of Goose Creek Estates with lots of one acres, around roughly one acres. We are in the county. What you're proposing is for Franklin to back up against the county. What I would like you to consider is what is around the city that's coming to the county. We love the fact that our kids can run around outside and play. They can go from house to house, yard to yard, and what you're putting in my backyard is not what we're used to in the county. You're putting the city of Franklin into my backyard. And what I would like to say today, the future of our children, once you change that from green space to houses that are so densely populated the kids can't go in their own backyard to play, that becomes a problem. And yes, what he said about the schools, I'm so thankful that they do have more schools being built, but I would really, really like a proactive approach to the infrastructure of Franklin as they come and move into our area, that you would consider the people that have been there for twenty-plus years, that we made that our home for a reason because we do like the green space. And the other people that are moving here, like I did twenty years ago, are moving here because we love the fields and the green space, and we want our kids to live in a space that has open fields for them to see and enjoy for future generations. So again, I voted in the Envision Franklin as well. I let my voice be heard, and the conservation process would be so much better for us in our backyard. So I would love to see these lot sizes bigger. I know that construction is going to happen. We live in that type of area, and I'm thankful for it, but please, please, please consider the people that are there, that we really do want bigger lot sizes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, hi, Greg Gamble. I just had a quick question, maybe a point of clarification. This is specifying SDR two-point-seven-four, which was in the old ordinance, but since the new ordinance was approved last night, should this be PD two-point-seven-four?
Just to address the commission, I meant to make that during my announcement time, but we will be updating the ordinances to zone that are in tonight's planning commission agenda, where they are SDR or SDX, to the PD district with the same density when they do go to the board and mayor and alderman. But since the effective date of the zoning ordinance is not till December thirtieth, you should actually be voting on them as based on the current ordinance tonight, and then we will update them when they get to the board for the final consideration.
Okay.
And to address some of the concerns you just heard, I believe a lot of those issues are addressed in our development plan regarding lot sizes, transitional features, significant open space areas that are set aside in conservation, preserving natural features. But look forward to answering any questions you have on the zoning.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Elaine put an helmet as a second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Ayes have it. Item twenty-one, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-nineteen, resolution approving a development plan for the Meadows and Villages at Southbrook PUD subdivision for the properties located east of Lewisburg Pike and north and south of the intersection of Stream Valley Boulevard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Envision Franklin places area A, the northern property, in the single-family design concept, and Envision Franklin places area B, south of Stream Valley Boulevard, into the conservation subdivision design concept. As stated in Envision Franklin, the conservation subdivision supports primarily single-family residential developments that clusters lots and infrastructures and sets aside a substantial amount of property as permanently protected open space in its state. New development should preserve a minimum of fifty percent open space. Both design concept have similar recommendations to lot size and layout. Larger developments are expected to have a wide ranges of sizes according to Envision Franklin. Single-family lots with dwellings accessed by an alley should have a minimum lot width of forty-five feet and a minimum lot size of four thousand nine hundred and fifty feet. Conservation subdivision also has a special consideration for Lewisburg Pike. New development should have deep setbacks to respect the existing character and should be sensitively designed around historic structures. Informal landscape design and rural features such as stone walls, wood plank fencing, and informal tree planting should be utilized to sustain the scenic and rural quality of the area. The proposed development meets many of the goals for the conservation subdivision and the single-family residential design concepts. It promotes lot placement that faces homes onto streets or open spaces and avoids reverse frontage lots even along Lewisburg Pike. In terms of Lewisburg Pike, this development does change the character of Lewisburg Pike as any development of a certain density would. However, the plan has deeper setbacks similar to the Stream Valley setbacks and has taken the steps to make the development seem more organic in building placement than a typical subdivision. It uses wide setbacks, approximately thirty feet between the buildings along Lewisburg, and staggers the front setbacks of the buildings, so there is variety in building placement along the corridor. It clusters the buildings into groups of three or four, providing open spaces in between these clusters. It also proposes an informal tree planting plan along the frontage of these buildings. In terms of lot dimension, this plan has about seventy-seven lots that do not meet the minimum lot width policy in Envision Franklin. Envision Franklin recommends a minimum lot width of forty-five feet for single-family lots accessed by an alley. These narrower lots account for thirty-eight percent of the proposed dwelling units and forty-eight percent of the single-family lots within the development. A policy for minimum lot dimensions was adopted as part of Envision Franklin for a variety of reasons, to address architectural considerations such as preferences regarding facade width, rhythm, and proportion of front-facing garages of long-street frontage, to ensure adequate room for easements between lots as needed, and to give more specific land use and density guidance to other departments regarding sewer and infrastructure demands. The Envision Franklin minimum lot dimensions will be revisited in spring twenty twenty through a separate study. Such a change to Envision Franklin may warrant sewer basin studies and transportation plans to be revisited as well. With that, staff recommends disapproval to the board and alderman.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Brian Davis. I live at one-one-five Gosling Drive in Franklin in Goose Creek Estates. I've been a resident for twenty-two years. I would also like to register our appeal that the PUD be revised to meet the full Envision Franklin requirements with a forty-five-foot lot size. Also, I'd sent out earlier today an email to the commissioners with a list of about five items that we would like to specifically see addressed as additional requirements should you decide to approve this tonight. They focus on the emergency gate access, actually the connector between the residential drive, spine drive, and that gate. Back in late spring, early summer, we worked with the Williamson County Transportation Commission as well as Mr. Gamble and the developer, and we were successful in denying complete access, full access to our subdivision through Cattail Lane. They did require the opportunity for an emergency gated access only for emergency vehicles. With that comes the requirement that those vehicles must be able to pass from one side to the other. So the Transportation Commission left the design of that gate and the activation of that gate up to be determined later on, and that to be in compliance with their approval and the Goose Creek Estates Homeowners Association's approval. We would like to request that the actual asphalt paved drive between the residential street and the emergency access gate go away and it be used as a turf grass drive with a geogrid system on a stone base that would allow for the support of fire trucks, emergency equipment, but it not be an asphalt drive, just to try to keep the visual of it from presenting the inference that there's a street continuing. We'd like to see a low-profile curb in the sidewalk to continue along the residential drive. We think that that section of asphalt not only detracts but would also lend to people parking there. We'd also like to ask one last thing, and that would be that the lighting for the security of the streets be done in a manner that lights what needs to be lit, no light pollution, but most specifically to prevent light glare to our side of the property line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, my name is Steve Ritchie. I live in Stream Valley, and I was at the board of mayor and alderman meeting in August, and I wrote some responses to what Mr. Gamble presented at that meeting, and I would just like to read it to you. Mr. Gamble told you the city has already approved smaller lot sizes in Berry Farms and other developments off Carruthers Parkway, and therefore this justifies the smaller lot sizes in Southbrook. First, the Berry Farms development has been around since sometime prior to 2010. Envision Franklin was adopted by the board in 2017 after a lot of public input. Many of the developments along Carruthers Parkway were also approved prior to 2017. Therefore, the idea of just because we have smaller lot widths in nearby developments doesn't justify making a huge exception to the proposed Southbrook development, especially given the specific guidelines in Envision Franklin for forty-five-foot minimum lot widths. Even though there are approved smaller lot sizes in Berry Farms and developments off Carruthers, let's look at the important facts. The proposed Southbrook development is, if approved, to be built in a conservation subdivision as shown in Envision Franklin Design Concept Map, page twenty-six. As I stated above, page one in the Envision Franklin, second to the bottom paragraph, the conservation subdivision guidelines have a minimum forty-five-foot wide lot size. Neither Berry Farms nor any of the developments off Carruthers are designated as a conservation subdivision, and Mr. Gamble's comparison of Southbrook to these other developments is comparing apples to oranges. Actually, Berry Farms is designated in Envision Franklin as either a neighborhood mixed-use, neighborhood commercial, or regional commerce development. These are not the same as a conservation subdivision and have totally different design guidelines. And so I would recommend that the planning commission deny approval of whatever changes if it's going to mean narrower lots, more cars, more roofs, more density, because that's not the nature of that particular area of the city of Franklin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark Hunter. I live in Goose Creek Estates, towards the end of Cattail Lane, which is, as we've heard already, one of the streets that backs up directly to the new development. I'd just like to add to some of the comments already. We've heard quite a lot about Envision Franklin and how important some of the green space is, the landscape planning, the general aesthetics of some of these developments. I think the proposal so far has done a reasonable job of the front of that development, how it looks from Lewisburg Pike, trying to make it aesthetically pleasing. I think what's been less well-considered is actually the look and feel and the green space and the landscaping from the residents of Cattail Lane currently. My property backs up directly onto the fence line of this development, as does Mrs. Rainey's. I don't think we've seen very good planning at all in terms of a landscaping buffer between our property and the new property. Part of that plan does clearly state there would be a fifty-foot landscape buffer to, you know, give us some privacy and the new neighbors some privacy. I don't believe the plan shows that all the way around our fence line. I think it's partial. What I'd like to propose is that that fifty-foot buffer, that seems like a reasonable compromise, is enforced all the way around our fence line so that, again, we can, both so that some neighbors can enjoy some privacy and from a landscaping perspective, it's appealing and it meets some of those guidelines from the guidance that we've heard about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Or is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, hi, my name is Greg Gamble, and as I mentioned before, a lot of these concerns, I believe, are addressed in the development plan as proposed. We've met several times throughout the design process for Southbrook with neighbors, really to seek input and get feedback. We're not required to have a landscape buffer alongside Goose Creek Estates. We do have a fifty-foot landscape buffer. The northern portion has four single-family lots that are all three-quarters of an acre in size. They're within seventy-five percent of the adjacent lot sizes. Going south along Goose Creek Estates' boundary, we have area there that ranges between fifty-three feet and a hundred and seventy-two feet of width that will be landscape buffer. It'll have stormwater elements in it to treat and clean our stormwater through bio-retention areas. We have a requirement by the Williamson County Highway Commission to take the final design of the emergency gates to the HOA for their review, and I was talking with the HOA president today about potentially being able to do that in summer of 2020. We're happy to share our landscape plan, the buffer plans at that time. We think that privacy between both neighborhoods is equally as important, so happy to look at that. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on the development plan.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah. Well, one concern, well, I kind of, one concern and then a point, is that as far as the percentage of lots that are not meeting requirements are at thirty-eight percent of the total, and for me personally, that's a number that's quite high. The other thing I thought was a valid point was, while it might not be required, you know, looking at the plan on the lot at the end of Cattail Lane, that, yeah, there, it looks like there's an intentional, you know, fifty-foot landscape buffer, and then there's a little corner, and, you know, if you're talking about privacy between the two developments, you know, there's definitely some views from that street from your development going in, so just take consideration on that.
My comment also, the thirty-seven percent being less than forty-five feet, that's relatively large for me, too. I won't be able to support that. Excuse me, I think I've been pretty consistent on that, and I need to, Shana always says you need to be very clear about why you vote no. Being clear here.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Roger?
Yeah, I've addressed these, minimum lot width in previous comments, and I have said at those times that I think that an exception, that in the case of an exception, an unusual circumstance, that I thought that it would be appropriate, but when it becomes more the rule, when the percentages begin to climb to, what is it, the B, section B is fifty-nine percent of the lots don't comply with the forty-five-foot minimum, and that's become more the rule than the exception. That's a staggering amount of-
That's a staggering amount of lots that don't meet our minimum standard.
Well, in defense, we are looking at creating economic diversity within the neighborhood. In our defense, when we started the process of design, the zoning ordinance, minimum lot size is 40-foot for SDR when loaded off of an alley with the opportunity to go less than 40 feet in a PUD, which is what this is. So that would be consistent, from a zoning standpoint, would be consistent with many other neighborhoods and subdivisions that you've approved throughout the City of Franklin over the past 20 years. And it is true that this lot size, less than 40 feet, was approved in Simmons Ridge, Lockwood Glen, West Haven, throughout the City of Franklin. It is a price point issue. It does affect the price of the house, and we believe it's significant enough, especially within the jobs corridor of Berry Farms, that this is an appropriate mix. This Lewisburg Pike corridor is the growth corridor for Franklin. It's not out to the northwest. It is down in this southern corridor. It's Paytonsville Road. It's Goose Creek Estates. It's Lewisburg Pike. Thompson Station recognizes that along I-65, that's their growth corridor. Spring Hill has recognized that along I-65, that's their growth corridor. We're going to see more potential development along Lewisburg Pike because sewer's available, water's available, and where that infrastructure is available and where those roads can be approved is where that growth should take place.
All right, any other discussion?
Greg, I know Stream Valley has attached product facing the interstate.
They do?
And those lots are, what, 24-foot wide?
Now, those are attached townhomes. They do have alley-loaded, single-family lots that are about, they're probably a little over, they're probably about 48-foot in width, but then they removed the rest of the alley-loaded lots out of the development plan once coming out of the recession.
Alternative to this request could be townhouses are attached.
We do have big houses that are implemented as a part of this plan. Big houses are two or three units side by side, or they're two units on top and two on the bottom. Now, that's only in the southern piece. The portion to the north, north of Stream Valley's entrance, those are all single-family detached homes. There's no attached in that neighborhood. Also to mention, at the joint conceptual workshop, it was stated to us that the smaller lots, lots less than 45-foot in width, need to be on the interior. All lots that front on Lewisburg Pike conform to Envision Franklin.
All right, any other comments?
Oh, I was going to say, I was supporting because I felt that approving lots less than 45 feet would give us some flexibility and the opportunity to have some lower price points, because at this point, the 45-foot lots, we're talking about $600,000 or more, and we won't have any other affordable homes in the city. We continue to not approve anything with less than 45 feet. That's a fact, so that's why I was supporting the lower lots.
Okay. Any other?
I just want to echo, I've always been a proponent of smaller lots for the same reason. If we continue to build larger lots, we are completely pricing out for younger people to move into the city. People that work here cannot afford to live here. That's why our commuting is so high every morning, both in and both out of Williamson County, so that's why I'm supporting this.
And some of the neighborhoods, like you mentioned, West Haven and a bunch of neighborhoods already have those, and for us to say, well, we don't want them anymore, we're just setting a precedence that we don't want to approve anything less than a $600,000 house, and that's what we're saying.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, just.
Go ahead.
And I just don't have a sense of the inclusion of smaller lots being a direct correlation to creating a smaller price point lot. Certainly, there would be, could be, but it doesn't mean all of a sudden because we put, I mean, you're not creating a smaller product, a cheaper product in the middle of West Haven. You're just putting, you've still got big houses on smaller lots. That's, and I don't think we're creating an affordable product in a lot of these.
In Envision Franklin, where you have Conservation subdivision, 50% of the land right off the bat has to be set aside in conservation. That means that your land price, the basis in your land price is twice as much as it would be if you were developing in a single-family policy area. It does directly influence the price of the house based upon the lot size.
Chairman, if I might.
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to leave it alone. Please do not sell me a bill of goods. From now on, when someone comes in here and say this, you got to start showing me numbers. Basically, what you do is we allow developers to build more houses and make more monies. When you say that, let's not do that. You may shave $15,000 to $20,000 off of a $350,000 home. That still doesn't allow most children to buy a house here. So you may take a $350,000 house and make it a $300,000 house. You don't allow workforce housing by doing that. Let's not do that, guys, okay? I don't want, let's not insult people's intelligence by saying that by us requiring somebody to build a 45-foot house, that we're allowing all this workforce housing to come in here, because we have not, in all the times we've made this, made these exceptions, we have not allowed an influx of people who live here to start buying houses here, because I've seen no numbers in that.
Well, I think we need to come up with some facts, because I, I mean, to me, it's just a common sense element.
We need some facts to support that.
Hold on.
But it's a common sense statement.
Okay, Jimmy?
Well, what's it matter about this lot width? Some people don't want that big wide lot. I'd rather have the smaller lot and have the amenities in my neighborhood that I can walk to and do something else, but I don't want to mow a 45-foot wide lot when there's a 37-foot lot available to me to mow or to have taken care of. So what's it really matter whether it's a 35-foot or 45-foot lot? Yeah, I'm with Marcia. That value, you can sell an $800,000 house on a 35-foot lot.
That's true.
So, you know, or you can sell a $400,000 house on it, too. I'm not buying into the price point as much as I am the, having a lot that is acceptable to many buyers that possibly is less expensive to buy. I mean, I could sell you a 35-foot lot less than I can a 45. I'm going to ask more of a premium on the 45. So by virtue of the lot value itself, there is some savings, but overall, you can still build an $800,000 house on a 35-foot lot. So I just don't see what the big deal is about the lot, the 50% or 60% ratio. What's it really matter? I mean, we've had surest done by the best professional planners in America, and they still promote narrow lots and wider lots and narrow lots and diversity lots. So I just don't understand why we're debating the 35% or 60%. End of the day, yeah, Mike Marcia, don't sell me on the $800,000 house or a $400,000 house, but sell me on a lot that is less expensive lot to lot, and I'll buy that 35-foot wide lot every day, not that 45, if it's offered to us. We need that in Franklin.
Roger, you had something?
I just, it goes toward setting precedent, it seems to me, because we looked, we looked earlier tonight at the work session at, you know, a change in the layout of the West Haven project, and one of the biggest features of the whole West Haven layout is the fact that Mac Hatcher is shown on there. We all know that Mac Hatcher is going to be built, and to me, it seems that the construction of Mac Hatcher to that point opens up a whole new horizon for thousands and thousands of additional acres of present farm and pasture land to become the next 10,000 resident subdivision. And as we, as we, the concept of this whole precedent, we're finding ways to put more and more people into a given amount of space that it will begin to become painfully apparent that adding this density in an area that's going to grow exponentially over the next 20 years could create more and more of the traffic issues, the congestion issues that we've prayed for Mac Hatcher Parkway to solve. So that's my concern, is that, because you just read off a list of subdivisions where we've allowed it, and now Southbrook will be added to that list. The next time we chastise you about a lot size, there'll be just one more development on the list that we've allowed these smaller lots to go in, so those are just my thoughts.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to say to Jimmy, the reason, or to anybody, the reason that we raised such a stink, or the reason I raised such a stink, is because we set that lot size in Envision Franklin, and that every time we make an exception to it, it's easier to make an exception. And if it's something that we don't want to abide by, let's change it, but until we change it, let's abide by it, unless, as Roger says, there's a reason not to, because sometimes there is a special reason. There's a, you know, there's something about the topography, or there's something about this site that we can't, but there's not. And so until then, it is a big deal, because that's what we said we were going to do. That's why.
Jimmy?
We just sat here and approved 200-something apartments on Rory Loakes when we were worried about a 35-foot lot?
Is it okay if we say something back here?
No, sir. No, no, public, public comments finished.
We didn't put our line, our line down. We didn't lie.
Public comments finished, sir. Any other comments? All right, all in favor for the motion to approve of the development plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, with a nose, raise your hand. All right, motion fails.
It fails.
All right. Item number 22, consideration of Resolution 2019-107, a resolution by the Planning Commission to amend the subdivision regulations. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Switching gears here.
Thank you, Jimmy. The FMPC is responsible for adopting, administering, and amending the subdivision regulations per authority granted by the Tennessee General Assembly. The subdivision regulations serve as a foundational planning document designed to provide for the harmonious development of the city by providing standards to secure the adequate provision for light, air, recreation, transportation, water, wastewater drainage, and other facilities. They establish the procedures for the preparation and submittal of preliminary and final plats. They were, ours were first adopted in 1966 and last underwent a minor update in 2013. The major changes include modernizing the overall organization and formatting of the document, providing references to applicable external standards and plans, ensuring compliance with state law, and providing specificity to the plat submittal and approval process. As the city has grown and evolved over time, many plans and documents have been adopted, negating the need for overly detailed subdivision regulations. However, the need remains to provide references to the other documents and standards that are applied during the planning process. The subdivision regulations remain a concise document and have been reordered to make it even more user-friendly. The same format that was used for the new zoning ordinance has also been used for this document. I would like to note that the Procedures Chapter, Chapter 4, is the most detailed of the chapters, and we've tried to clearly establish the process for submitting preliminary and final plats. It clearly outlines the steps, lists the approval criteria, and identifies the grounds for plat revisions. And the Departmental Review Team, DRT as we call it, got some help from them along the way, and also updating the list of information required to be shown on plats, and that's reflected in the update. I would like to note that we are recommending the effective date of these amended subregs to line up with the zoning ordinance, so that would be December 30, and I've noted that in the subdivision regulations. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of Resolution 2019-107.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak about this, please do. All right, I see none. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Move to seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
I just want to say, we've just gone through all of this with the zoning ordinance and everything, and honestly, I have not looked at it until we finished the vote on the zoning ordinance, what, two days ago? I understand that you've rewritten it, you know, and obviously it needed rewriting, but still, it would have been helpful to give us some further information about it and some discussion on it, really. And so that would be my main concern here. As I say, I'm going to vote for it, but still, this is something that, you know, obviously has been around for a very long time, and I'm not, I'm still not sure I can tell, even though I understand that much of the material that was already, that was in there for such a long time, went into some other, in some other places like street standards and stuff like that, but still, it would have been helpful to at least have discussed some of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Any other items? Staff? No heads, no shaking no, up and down, no? All right, then do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.